You call roll please. Centola?
Here.
Barrero? Here. Super? Here. Oakley?
Here.
Staub?
Here.
Stahl?
Here.
Williams? Okay, Mr. Britton would you read us the pledge please?
My pledge is to the life of the United States of America and to your republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And hope this is a rest down, so on to the eye of the storm.
Yep, first we have Mr. Field, he's going to talk about the LVC student recognition and making county principals' student recognition.
We just went to the LVC conference today for the senior student recognition and with us today we had Seth Manier and Ashley Ford who were recognized today. We actually received some plaques from earlier in the year, we had the, during the LVC conference tournament for boys' basketball, we had scholar athlete recognition at that time too, which I think came with a little bit of a scholarship and that was Ashley Ford and Megan Doty. So we got their additional materials today. We went to the Macon County Regional High School Principals Association meeting last week, I believe it was last week or the week before, and we took our co-valedictorians for this year, Grace Brownlee and Ally Wilcox, and they were recognized at that time and at which time they received a $100 check from the Principals Association, it's a big recognition. They got to kind of meet up with some of the folks from the other schools out in the county and had a real good time. We were at Yoder's today, the kids really loved that and they got to kind of see some of their friends they played against and stuff, yeah, in the different seasons and it was, it was really good and a really good showing for the kids that have done such an outstanding job in the classroom and on the court and out on the field and stuff, so really cool.
Good to see you.
Thank you. And next we have Mrs. Wheeler and Kay Mason and Julie Bauer here and they're going to talk about the middle school speech team.
Mrs. Mason, we're just trying to break the story of how many years we think that this speech formerly known as literary program has been going and the best we can estimate is 50 or so, that it's a very long-running program that our students participate in. And basically what it is is we have an acting team of lots of little divas and dudes who perform for their classmates and at a state contest in events that are solo events, UED events, group events. Some of them have scripts, some of them play it off the cuff with improv. We added a team improv this year which was a big hit at contests, we were the only team that had that, so we had a wonderful year. These kiddos choose an event in early December, they practice, practice, practice it, and then in February, mid-February, we start performing. We perform for classes, some of them have performed for the Community Service Club, some have performed for kids at the East Campus, a lot of performances at school, in fact they have to do at least five performances before they're even allowed to go to the state contest. And some of them, I think our highest one this year had performed 17 times before we went to contests, so well-practiced, well-reversed. The coolest thing about speech is it's a short play if you will, usually between five and 10 minutes, they get no props, no costumes, nothing. That's why it's traditionally been called literary. They have to do all of their expression and movement with their own bodies, their own voices, so it has a lot of reading skills that are practiced in it. And this year's team performed at the state contest here at St. Melville, we got to host it, which was really cool. We have consistently been the largest team in our area and this year we took just under 50 kiddos that performed in almost 30 events, so we were again one of the largest, in fact we doubled the next biggest school which was Taylorville, we doubled them in size at contest, and they did a fabulous job. We had, they give, these students are ranking of three, two, one, or one, two, three, or four, and one being the highest, one being an absolutely exceptional performance, two being a solid, very strong performance, and then three is you did a great job, keep working on it, and four had some troubles. This year's team, we only had one-third good rating, we had, I gotta check my cheat sheet here, we had five second strong division rates and we had 22 superior performances. And the coolest thing is at the end of the day their judges picked their two favorite events from the whole day and we had six judges, one of them cheated and chose three, so they chose, did 13 judges' choice awards and our team took home nine of them. So not only were they great performances, we had some of the best performances according to those judges. So we are really, really proud of the kiddos and all their hard work and we hope to continue on with it. I thought instead of me introducing them since it's speech team, they're going to stand up. And they can tell you their name and I'm going to test their memory, our season ended almost literally two months ago tonight was our celebration. So it's been a while, but I'm going to see if they remember the name of their script or events. Okay? So tell us your name and your script or your event if you will, pass over there.
Um, I'm in math and I did Megamole.
So small group, right?
Yes.
All right. Yes, here.
Miskits? Um, I'm, my name is Sarah Stacy and I did Megamole and...
Yes, which is literally fighting with her sister, go figure.
My name is Martin Keller and I did Wishes Do Come True.
Hi, I'm Ollie Bart and I did Goodbye to the State of New York.
Uh, I'm Jayla Waldorf and I did Je, um, Couple of Geniuses.
I'm Charlotte Cummings and I did Miskits.
I am Kitty Chubbly and I did Maybe I Will, Maybe I Won't.
I'm Shelby Oakley, I did...
I'm Tiffany Fagin and I did The Big Brother.
I'm Martha Iverson, I do Not Hear This, I did one improv with one partner and I did one improv.
My name is Lisa Bruson, I did Schwatteteam Improv and Team Improv.
My name is Emily Key, I did Just Try.
I am, my name is Jake Scott and I did the True Stories of the Dream.
So just as an added, let us raise your hand if you were one of our friends who got judges' choice awards this year.
So until next year, that's it. Start again. Thanks a lot guys for representing the school so well.
Thank you.
Woo-hoo! Hold this one for you guys.
Next up we have Ms. Allen, the FFA awards.
All right, so tonight with me I have Georgia Miller and Esther Coe and these two have done some amazing things throughout the course of this year. They have record books whenever we started this journey last year, but they've really stood back with it this past year and Georgia is actually going to be the first one I'm talking about, she is receiving her state FFA this year at the June Conference, the state convention. This is the highest FFA degree that she can achieve within the state of Illinois, the only degree above it is her American degree which is awarded at national convention and I'm hoping maybe she'll continue on, we haven't really shown above that yet, but I'm hoping she'll continue on and strive for her American degree at St. Melville, only currently has one American degree or something, so it's a very high achieving award for Georgia. FFA in Illinois only has around 17,000 members, oh, only, around 17,000 members and only 2% of those members achieve their state FPA degree and Georgia's one of those 2%. So we are very, very excited that she was able to achieve this award. What she had to do was have pulled three years of records, so financial records, she kept her record books on swine production with Miller Berks. And so she had a lot of animal inventory and birthing records, death loss, went through the whole gamut and I'll let her explain that a little bit more in just a minute, but she had to achieve $1,500 and productively invest $1,000 into her project as well as work 750 hours throughout the course of her three-year project. So we're very, very excited and Georgia, I will let you go ahead and explain exactly what it is that you have to record some.
Okay, so my name's Georgia Miller, as you said, I'm a senior here at St. Melville and I'll be attending I am's statement of all. But I kept my record book, as you said, on swine production entrepreneurship, which means that I kept the records of my everyday activities on my farm with my projects and just with various things that I learned as like running tractors and things like that, just safety activities as well. So I kept track of different litters that I have when I bred my animals, I kept track of my show records because I do go to the Illinois State Fair and to the Christian County Fair in Taylorville. So I kept track of what places I have my animals, what I did with them, what I feed them, just every single aspect of our operation at home and what it did for me. So that includes finances and just like I said, the everyday dealings on the farm. And she also had to track her leadership activities and her being our chapter president not really played a role into that as well because the state FPA degree is not awarded just solely on record keeping, it's also awarded on her education knowledge for participation in the chapter and state infection levels as well as her public speaking, she had an interview component to this as well, a grueling 20-minute interview on her records. So it is a very intensive process, not only the actual record keeping side of it, but the process then to go ahead and be awarded your state degree is, is a very grueling process as well. So we're very proud of Georgia for being able to achieve her state degree this year. Esten here has a different type of record book award, there's something called proficiency awards, which is when the students are competing throughout the course of the year with their record books, but they have one award night in February where they compete within their section. And so our section includes from Maroa down to Windsor, Sullivan, Sarabord, we're the farthest on this side, we have Taylorville, Central Anne, and so a lot of our surrounding schools are in our Section 16 and Section 16 is a very, very competitive section when it comes to record book judging, if any of you ever went through that as a high school student. But at our district level, Section 16 takes over, over 50% of the awards, so we are very strong, very competitive and our students that move on and compete at the higher levels do tend to do well. And Esten was lucky enough to win section and District Four, District is comprised of five sections within the state and we again are the farthest on this side and then we go all the way over to the Indian border and south down to Cumberland area. But Esten won in turf grass management, so this includes mowing yards, you could be working for golf courses, fertilizing, spraying, all that different type of thing. And Esten, do you want to go ahead and explain that a little bit more?
Yes, my name is Esten Carroll, I'm currently junior here at St. Melville as well as the chapter vice president in Section 16 central. Started knowing about the time I was in grade school for the local neighbors, just doing small work, section mowing and multi-year my business grew, I did, took care of several rundown properties in town. Because of my good work, neighbors took quickly note, took notes quickly and because of my business correctly, when I joined high school, I started recording this for my supervised agriculture experience and I learned many skills as well as responsibilities on the way such as engine maintenance and different tricks and trade for them. I learned a lot and I competed a lot with other individuals in the turf grass area and I, next year will be a senior and I will compete again. I plan to use the money I generate from my project to fund my college, which I intend to go to Purdue and Lafayette, Indiana.
So Esten is one of the top five lawn mowing people in the state of Illinois as far as that's been a while ago. But he did go ahead and make it to state awards day, it was held at U of I on March 25th and he did not actually receive that top honor, we don't know rankings other than the top honor, but we're really, really confident that he'll be back there again next year because he can only improve from now and if we're number one in the district now, hopefully we can be number one in the district again next year. So we're really proud of Esten for making it that far and he is going to be working towards his state degree to achieve that in his senior year as well as possibly running for section president, we're discussing that right now. So these two have done some really awesome things this year, I'm going to be really sad, we just had our chapter officer elections right before this meeting and Georgia is having a little bit of a hard time leaving her role as president this year, so she has about four weeks left, a month left and so I'm really going to miss her, she's been really good, but these two have really taken off this year and have been really great leaders for our chapter, so I definitely wanted to go ahead and recognize them here with you guys tonight. I do have banquet invitations for everybody but Mr. Central Picturesman, Jacy. So the rest of you guys, we would really like to see you, our awards banquet is in tents and these two will be running that show that night, so thanks for letting us know.
Thank you, very happy to meet you. Okay, at this point we need to move on to have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Motion made by Leonard Williams, is there a second? By Mike Staub, Colwell, please. Ferrero? Yes. Leaper? Yes. Oakley?
Yes.
Staub?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Centola?
Yes.
And Superintendent Prechor?
I have a few items to discuss. First off with the science lab, we did finally get into the classroom and the lab, Valerie Wells from the Airmint Review came out and did a report and I think that's been out already and that has aired. I think we have links to that on our website, so if you want to check that out, but it's great to finally be in there, I think the kids really enjoy it, that opportunity to be in there. As far as the budget-wise goes, we're right now at about $400 to $7,000, but I think that's pretty much it, there might be a few small change of work orders that will come in, but overall I think that's pretty much it. So it's great to be in there finally, it seemed like it took a long time, but I think it's been worth the wait and like I said, the kids and Miss England really enjoy being out there in the space, so wanted to update you on that. Next up fiscal year 18 grants, there were two grants that we were really looking forward to and hoping that we could apply for and compete for. The first one being the Early Childhood Block Grant, that funds our, would have funded our pre-K program, we lost that grant, I think it's been four or five years ago since we actually received money from the state to run our pre-K program. Last year you guys voted as a board to make that completely funded by the district, prior to that the families that were taking part of the pre-K program had to pay tuition and so the board agreed to fund that. Unfortunately, we were told that that grant would be open to apply for without a state budget, no grants, therefore we're hoping that maybe it will open back up for fiscal year 19 and that application process should open up sometime in the fall, that's what we're hoping. It would be nice, it's such an important program and it would be nice to have some money from the state to fund that, but regardless, I think that's something that we need to continue to do and move forward with. There was also legislation passed in January, Senate Bill 2975 was passed to promote Agit, which is appropriate for tonight. And this grant would basically, any new program starting up that would fund the cost of the teacher 100% for five years, we were going to apply for that, it would fund our teacher 50%, and I believe that's a competitive grant that we would have to apply for every year. Much like the early childhood grant, no budget, no appropriation, so no Agit grant. But we will look to, hopefully that will open up again in the fall, next fall for fiscal year 19 and if it does, we will certainly apply for it. And the last thing that I have, staffing needs for next school year, as I put in my recommendations to you, we have five positions that we need to fill for next school year. A few of those positions were due to resignations, people moving on to do other things. We had two positions, the high school math position, which is a new position, and if you remember back in January, the curriculum committee came together and we wanted to be able to expand our offerings in math, we also wanted to be able to provide additional support for students. We upped the rigor, but we've not really upped the supports that the students need to be successful. And everyone agreed that that was something that we needed to do, so when we go into closed session, I will have a recommendation for that position. Next up, we have a speech and language pathologist position, this is also going to be a new full-time position for the district. I am estimating that we will have roughly 100 speech IEPs in the district, pretty close to that. And with the speech, you have the IEP meetings that you have to run, so you have 100 IEP meetings plus you'd have to meet all the minutes required in the speech and language curriculum. So Trish Watson had been doing it for several years as an retired teacher and she's had enough. And so I have a couple names, hopefully set up interviews within the next couple weeks, I'm hoping to have a recommendation for you in the May board meeting, hoping. I think that's it. The other three openings that we have, we have a high school special education position which we were unable to fill this school year, that position's been posted since fall and like I said, we've not been able to fill that. I do have a recommendation for that position in closed session. Middle school special education, that, we had a resignation there, and then also high school social science, we had a resignation there which will act upon in closed session. We are doing interviews currently for the social science position and like I said, I hope that we get a few more language, speech and language people in, but right now I only have two applicants. Well, I think that's it.
So then we go on to new business. Looks like our motion to approve the IHSA membership for the 2017-2018 school year at a cost of $800 to the district, which is something we have to do.
Something that we do every year and IHSA is a little bit different in the fact that we have to pay per sport that we participate in and this year's total, I think was the same as last year, is $800.
Okay, so anybody want to make that motion?
So move.
Jeff Staub, is there a second?
Second.
Mike Staub, call roll please. Oh, Brad? Yeah. Call roll please. Leaper? Yes. Oakley?
Yes.
Staub?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Centola?
Yes.
Ferrero?
Yes.
Next up, we have the IHSA membership, that is, I say free, but they make most of their money from the regional serieses, the state championship, that sort of thing. When we host one of those and we take gate, of course with that money goes to IHSA for administrative costs and that sort of thing, so it is free, but it's...
Okay, so a motion to approve IHSA membership for the 2017-2018 school year at no cost to the district. Mike Staub, is there a second?
Second.
Brad Centola, all in favor? Oppose? Motion passes 7-0.
I kind of made a mistake in your board act, I told you that every other year we go to Orlando and that is not accurate, every other year we do a band trip and we alternate that with Orlando and Six Flags. And at both of those locations, the band competes and performs, it's a great opportunity for the kids, this so happens to be the year that we're rotating back into Orlando, so I would recommend that the band, that you approve the band trip to Disney World Orlando, Florida for June 2018 at no cost to the district.
Okay, so do we have a motion to approve the band trip to Disney in June 2018 at no cost to the district? So move. Motion made by Martha Leeper, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Jeff Staub, all in favor? Oppose? Motion passes 7-0. Okay?
The fuel bids, this year Evergreen FS came in with a low bid for propane and for unleaded gas and I would recommend that you award that bid to Evergreen FS.
Okay, so motion to award the propane and unleaded gas bid to Evergreen FS for the 2017-2018 school year. Motion made by Mike Staub, is there a second? A second? By Martha Leaper, call roll please. Oakley?
Yes.
Staub?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Centola?
Yes.
Ferrero? Yes. Please? Yes.
And the final item, the village, representative from the village of Harastown actually spoke to Carol and asked if we, if I would present this to you as a board. They are interested in hosting a beer tent during their 4th of July celebration which occurs on school property on the East Campus in Harastown. I spoke to our attorney, I looked at Illinois school code, the board of, you as a board of education can agree to do this on a special occasion when there are no students present. Again, that's going to be your decision, I'm going to recommend that you not allow that on school property, like I said, the decision isn't there from yours. I would like to go on the record as saying...
I don't, I don't think it's probably wise to start something, I get that it would bring a crowd and maybe more of a crowd and be a moneymaker, but I don't think that's something that we should entertain on school property in a family event, in my opinion.
But one more thing, they did mention that they would, they would sell bracelets and get into the tent and the proceeds for the bracelet sale would be donated to the school. Little caveat, I guess, but I still recommend that you do that business.
Anybody have any other comment or question or before I can take a call? So we need a motion to allow the village of Harastown to have a beer tent on school property during their annual 4th of July celebration. So no motion? And at this time I need a motion in our closed session for the reasons, save it on the agenda. Motion made by Leonard Williams, is there a second?
Second.
By Mike Oakley, call roll please. Staub?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Centola?
Yes.
Ferrero? Yes. Leaper?
Yes.
Staub?
Yes.
All right, so I need a motion to accept the closed session minutes as read in closed session. By Jeff Staub, is there a second? Mike Staub? Call roll please. Ferrero? Yes. Oakley?
Yes.
Staub?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Williams? May seventeen, um, the start time will be six P M. due to Baccalaureate being that evening as well. So six P M. Wednesday the twenty-sixth, six P M. May seventeen. Okay? And I need...
I got one question.
Okay.
Uh, where are we at on the water testing? Well, we have to have it completed by next December. Next December or this December? Uh, well, yeah, this coming, twenty-seventeen. Um, I've checked into a couple places, uh, I'm still gonna check into at least a few more to get, make sure that I get decent bids. Um, I think worst-case scenario, they charge by the number of sources that you have, and I think, what, we come up with twenty-one sources in Eliotlus and Haristown combined, so... How long does it take to get the test results? I doubt I do not. But we were told to, um, there was still some legislation that had to be cleared up to finalize what the process was gonna be and how to do that, and, um, we were recommended a couple months ago by the R O E doubled off until that, um, has come through and it's said that it has the final regulations have been put out by the state board, so that's something I will work on over the summer.
Okay. So I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Leonard Williams, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Jeff Staub, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Yep.